I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd invite everyone to rise and join in the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Who would have roll call please, Phyllis?
I'm all you.
Here.
Craig Koshaw.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Pulling Camp.
Here.
And Wiley Kirk.
You all emailed a copy of our minutes from our August 2nd meeting. Need a motion to approve those minutes. So move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve our August 2nd minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. But tonight we have plenty of public hearings and plenty of ordinances. And the first, we have two public hearings. The first one is in reference to our water rate increase that we announced. And so what I need first is a motion to suspend the city council meeting.
So moved.
Second. A motion and a second to suspend the council meeting, and I need a motion then to open a public hearing.
So moved.
A motion and a second to open the public hearing. So our motion to, or our public hearing is now open. I need to make a matter of record that the legal notice was put in the paper in reference to the water rates and charges.
So moved.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Dan?
Yes.
Would you like to kind of cover the water rate increase briefly?
Basically, we gave an ask for a 15% water increase on just the water on the bill. Basically, just trying to be proactive and get some things done rather than just fixing leaks as we go. Water Department has been losing money for the last few years because they have been doing more and more projects. And I can't sit and watch the cat bombs go down. So basically, we're asking for 15% on the water part of the bill so that we can keep doing projects and moving into future with better infrastructure going around. A 15% to a minimum user is going to be about $1.10 by the month. To an average user, it's about $3.26. So that's what we're asking for.
Any discussion from council or from the public in reference to the water rate increase? I consider just trying to keep our head above water and keep from losing going the wrong direction. We are doing a complete water utility, what's the word? Feasibility study, and likely we'll have another water rate increase in a year or so, once that study comes back. But for now, this is just kind of a Band-Aid to help us get through until then. Public question. Yes, sir. Would you state your name, please?
My name is Bobby Jackson.
Bobby Jackson, thank you.
I live here in Decatur, and I've been here since '70. And the water rate to me, I understand, I worked for the city of Decatur and the water district, but the water rate seemed like in the last, you said, 11 years, it hasn't went up. But I think, I don't know what it is you called one up, that our bill has went from $37, $38 range to over $100. Now, I know the sewage bill, you know, adds to that, but I think, for me and a lot of people in town, and I'll be honest with you, the people like me, which I worked for years, and now I can't because I'm on disability, but there's a lot of people out there that are not going to make these bills if they keep getting up into the hundreds and over $100 range. I mean, with disability, we're not going to do it. And I don't think that you can bring a water truck by and make sure that we got water every week. And I'm just thinking, what you need to do, and I've sat down with some of the other people, instead of raising our water rate, you need to look inside the city and find out what you can take down, do without, and regain some of this money. I mean, what is your, how much gas you lose, losing at all these car trucks, SUV? You buying an SUV instead of a car and using twice the gas.
Let me explain that first. For one thing, when it comes to utilities, it's totally separate from simple city. So if you're talking about police department, street department, sanitation department, that's all separate. There's user fees for utilities, there's tax dollars for all the rest. So there's not a whole lot of equipment when you're talking about the water department.
I understand.
All these SUVs here stuff you're talking about are not the water department.
No, I'm talking about money overall. When we're needing money, you're coming to us and saying, "We're going to have to raise the water bill. We're going to have to raise the sewage. We're going to have to do the water drain system."
Like it or not, the infrastructure that's under the ground is old.
I understand.
And to replace it?
In the '70s, I was out there working, me, Jim, and Steve, bunch of them. So I understand that. We put her down.
And believe me, we do feel for everyone out there, home citizens. And that's why the water rate has been kept, our water rate is one of the lowest in the whole state, the water part of our bill. It's got to a point where it's extremely low and it's not paying the bills. And we've been put, I mean, you see the water running throughout town, you see the filled square spots, and that's from just constantly fixing the leak and not moving ahead and improving the system. So what we're trying to do, because when we have a leak at night, you bring in five guys in overtime, and you put a $500 clamp on it, and you have all this overtime, all this backfill, you're looking at, it's just $8 to $10 leak. That if we can replace that road for $100,000, we're not going to touch it again for 50 years. But we have these leaks, when we dig up leaks, we'll have plants that are from probably back when you worked. And there's seven of them together.
In one block.
One hundred feet. And we just keep wasting money fixing these little leaks. So like I said, and you talk about going up the bill, has gone up, and you're right. The sewer department has had three or so increases in the last 10 years, but those are mostly from state mandates, the things that we have to do to adhere to IDN and EPA and everything. The water rate has not. The sanitation moved up, 2010, I think, but that went from four to 12. I mean, you were hitting four trash pickups, your lease pickup, your heavy trash twice a year for $4 a month. It wasn't paying the bills. Now it's $12. I mean, so yes, there has been increases over the last 15 years.
And now we're-
The water rate hasn't done-
And now we're adding recycling at no charge for at least the first year until we know what that's going to cost.
We do have our trash pickups every week, heavy trash twice a year, long distance pickup for $12 a month. I mean, our bill is low. When you look around another city, it really is low. And I understand it keeps going up and keeps going up. And as he said, we'll be looking at another something next year when we do a bigger project for the water department. I'm hoping that we'll hire an accounting firm that can do some creative accounting and maybe mess with the bonds we had before, and maybe keep our minimum users low and actually raise the rate to the people that are using the water. So, and that's the biggest complaint I get from people is the minimum users. I have one person in my house, I don't use that much water, and I still pay this amount. And believe me, we understand that. So next year when we go to do this, we're going to look at that and see if we can change that little rate structure and help out the minimum users. That's what I'm thinking next year. I mean, right now, this one, it's under $2, for the minimum usage, just to help us pay bills and do projects and not have the leaks we're having right now.
Very well said, Dan.
Okay, you got the feasibility study, you say you're going to do. Like the mayor just mentioned, that water rate will probably go up again next year. Is there any projection on how much that'll be, another 15%?
Like I said, you know, we're hoping to refinance the old bond, 2007 bond.
And if that's the case, there may not be an increase to you.
Is it true you're losing the lease on the well field out there?
Well, no, there's no truth of pre-losing lease. There's a date that it ends.
What is it, next year?
Oh, no, it's 20 years.
Yeah. We're not in any danger.
You guys, about three months ago, talked about the lease was running out on the well field.
It's not running out. It has an end date.
Has an end date.
This is what I'm looking at, okay? If we're going to do a 50-year project, do we want to do a 50-year project where we have 16 more years left on lease? That's where that-
And the remodeling of the water plant.
If we remodel that water plant, don't pull water from somewhere else, then we're relying on that field that has a lease for about another 16 more years.
So you're saying it's 16 more years?
I think, and I'm just guessing, I can't remember the actual-
It's not next year.
No. Let's say 15 to 20, it's somewhere in that range when it runs out. So if we're going to look at it 50 years and not two years, we need to look at other alternatives, and that's what we're doing. The feasibility study.
You know, one thing that I'll add too, as far as the water, if you think back a couple years ago, when we had the blizzard and we lost water on our towers, and think of the inconvenience that that posed to residents and their households, but think of what the impact was to businesses throughout the community. We take for granted that when we turn the spigot on, water's going to come out, and it's clean and usable. We're very fortunate that we have access to good quality water, but if we don't have the infrastructure to deliver it, we're going to run into problems, and we're starting to experience that. If you go down Washington Street, just count how many times that street from US 27 to the railroad tracks has been repaired. I did it the other day, and I think I counted 10 repairs in that stretch alone. And that's not unique, there are many other streets that you see something similar.
A couple years ago, we were on High Street 13 times in 12 months. I mean, do the math, that could have paid for that, that could have paid about $150 to $200,000, I believe, to do all High Street. That could have paid for that, and we would never have to go there again for the next 50 years. If we just look ahead and fix it, we'd have had it.
Did the problem get fixed with the water towers? I mean, wasn't that some of the problem, that the water towers drained down?
No, that night, you mean?
Yeah.
No, what happened that night was, okay, it was negative temperatures.
Right.
15 inches of snow on the ground.
Right.
And the leak happened right behind Courtesy Motors in that dish area back there.
Right.
Okay, when we got a new system set up, that when the towers start dropping because of a water leak somewhere, Jeremy gets alarmed, no, Carpenter gets alarmed, those alarms go off. So the only thing we could do at that point is go find the leak. So we had-
Can't stop the water from coming out of the tank? You don't have any kind of gauges or well tools or-
You could shut the plants down, but then there's no, then no one, I mean, well, no, I mean, you could shut the valves off to the tanks.
Right.
Right. You could go out there and just shut the valves off.
Yep.
And then you're going to drain all your lines, you're going to create leaks all over the place, and nobody's going to have water. So the goal is usually when that happens, is go find the leak. So they have hotspots they go look for. You know, you go through industrial park, you want to make sure water's not running out of businesses, because this is 3:00 in the morning that it happened, or whatever time, maybe I hate it.
And well below zero.
So what happened was, it was in a very bad area. The tanks drained out for like four or five hours before it was spotted. And one of our guys actually went back and waved his snow and walked that bit, that creek and found that leak. And so, and that's just one of the, that's one of the issues we're talking about. When you're talking about 50 to 70-year old water lines, it's going to keep happening. So no, it wasn't an issue with towers at all, it was a leak that couldn't be found. It took $5, $6 to find the leak.
Any other comments from the public? Sir?
Maybe tell us something. What is the amount for the minimum usage?
What is, oh, the water amount, the actual usage? It's 360 cubic feet, which is about, I think it's about 24, 260 gallons.
Well, they list like 200 as an average for me.
200 cubic feet. Yeah. So up to 360 cubic feet is the same bill, that's our number.
Well, that must have messed up somewhere, because three years ago, I had surgery, and my usage actually went from averaging 200 to averaging 600, and the bill didn't go up.
I'm basic, but that's all.
Well, I got bills, I don't-
I'll tell you, the bill that has 200 cubic feet is not here to stay.
We're not going to dispute that tonight, but if you want to bring them in, so Dan, you can.
I don't care who wants them. My door is always open.
Any other comments? Council, any comments?
Well, I think that it's been discussed over the last three or four months. The main reason we're wanting to take care of this is we don't want to put asphalt pavement over the top of terrible water lines and sewer lines, so we'd like to do the underground infrastructure before we pave over it, so we don't cut holes in the asphalt for our public. It's a long-term deal, but I think we've got to fix it right.
No other comments? I would look for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
A second. A motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. And I would look for a motion to reconvene the city council meeting.
So moved.
Second, have a motion and a second to reconvene the city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. At this time, then, we would have our, we've had our first two readings of ordinance 2016-9, which is for that 15% water rate increase, and I would look for a motion to introduce ordinance 2016-9 on its third reading.
So moved.
Second. Okay, let's rephrase this before we vote.
Yes.
Let's rephrase this. I would look for a motion to introduce ordinance 2016-9 by short title only in its third reading.
Motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second for third reading of ordinance 2016-9 by short title only. Tim, take it away.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2016-9, short title, ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, Indiana, which establishes amended rights and charges for the use and the service rendered by the Decatur Water System.
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2016-9 on its third reading. Second. Have a motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 2016-9. We would have roll call, vote.
Ken Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Pulling Camp.
Yes. Ordinance 2016-9 has been adopted. Now we're ready for public hearing number two. I would look for a motion to suspend the city council meeting to open a public hearing for the annexation of the Adams County Corrections Facility.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to suspend the city council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. I would look for a motion to open a public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. And our public hearing for the annexation of Adams County Corrections Facility and the Miller Farm into the city of Decatur. With us this evening, it looks like we have a county commissioner, a couple county attorneys, and Kristy Sturts from Sturts Public Management, is that how it is?
Make a-
We need to make the matter of record of the public hearing matter of record.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second to make the legal notice a matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you. Kristy, would you like to present the fiscal plan for the annexation?
Thank you.
Would you mind here, because there's a microphone, that way it'll be recorded.
Okay.
Thank you. Good to have you again, Kristy.
Thank you. Good to see you, everyone. Been a little while. I guess, first of all, I just wanted to go over the process. Annexation can be, there's a lot to it, and depending on the nature of the annexation, there's a real different process. This annexation is a, considered a super voluntary annexation, which means that this is received by council from 100% of the property owners. There is an abbreviated process for that type of annexation as opposed to one that is, you know, not signed off by all 100%. You should have received a petition back in July with the introduction of the fiscal plan. There will be a resolution to approve the fiscal plan as well as the ordinance for the annexation, which is not for vote this evening. That will need to be within, what is it, at least 14 days after the publication.
We will do the second reading on the ordinance tonight.
The third and final will be September 6th.
Yes. And same, the resolution, two weeks from tonight.
And then after the vote, there will be a publication. There's a 30-day appeal period, and then the annexation would be effective within the 20 days after publication. Just to give you an overview of the fiscal plan that was provided for the Adams County Correctional Facility property annexation. This annexation area is located to the south of the city. It is contiguous to city boundaries above to the east and west, and then there is some property, or it is some agricultural property to the north and then US 33 to the south. The area is approximately 160 acres. There are no persons that reside yet on the property at this time. The Adams County owns the land and is currently constructing the correctional facility on one of the parcels, some of the additional parcels. It is anticipated will be developed for a commercial use into the future. However, at this time, that zoning is not in place. The current zoning is at agricultural and multifamily. Any future commercial development would necessitate a rezoning for those properties. Because the land is owned by the county, there is, you're not anticipating any new property tax revenue. There is an assessment of approximately 250,000, but that is, that property is considered exempt. And it is anticipated that the area would be assigned to council this or two, subject to any later reaportment. When you look at the state law requirements, you have to show that the property that you're annexing is contiguous to the city boundaries. At a minimum, you need to show 12.5% continuity. This area is at 14.7%. And we also need to prepare our fiscal plan, which is what we have done this evening. In order, in regards to the need for the annexation, you know, this does provide public safety needs for the community as a whole. There is also the thought that by annexing additional land to the south, you are providing for the future growth and economic development of the community by having land that would have access to your services and already be within the city boundaries. In regards to services, we talked to the different departments. It looks like the police department does anticipate some minimal calls, looking at some of the other areas, and we have approximately $610 estimated for their services. The fire department's estimated at about $1,700, again, some minimal call usage, very similar to what they would have at the existing facility. This, of course, would increase upon the development of other activities, but that is unknown right now. There is no other planned development anticipated. As you look at, you know, the street, there is a street that will be brought into the city limits, which is US 33, but that is under the state jurisdiction. And so they're really, and what is currently within the jail would be private drive at this point in time. In regards to water, the area would be brought in, and the anticipated revenue for the water is approximately $8,772 a year. For the sewer, the anticipated revenue is approximately $20,702, and the storm is at $2,100 per year. After doing kind of a cost benefit analysis, I believe that you have been notified, I did want to make an amendment to the plan. I do have copies for those that would want to see it. It is in regards to the five-year summary. When you look at the revenues minus expenses, when I put the plan together, I inadvertently put some of the wrong numbers in, and when I was reviewing it, I realized that, and so I made the amendment to the overall five-year plan for your review. What I am showing is that, you know, for each year, after you take out what your expenditures would be, what you, and include the water, sewer, and storm revenue, you're looking at approximately $29,740 a year, which over a five-year total would be approximately $2,600, looking at those different areas.
Any comments from the public about the annexation of the jail property? Let's start with the young lady right there.
Come in, we're Jim Lawler, and our house is right there beside, it'd be right there on Winchester Street, beside the jail.
Okay.
All that, all that annexation affect us. I mean, currently, we are in the county.
And you still will be.
What, but if you surround us, totally annexation, that's what we got in the county call, you know, they-
We will not be, we will not be annexing you unless you would come to us and have a voluntary request to be annexed, okay? But we're not going to be annexing you or any of the other residents that are currently in the county. It's just that land. It will not affect you in any way.
Even us in kind of an island there, two years down the road, or four years down the road, and you come out and say, "Well, we want to annex, you don't have any choice."
No, no. And the reason why, and Mr. Baker can explain this a little better, the state has really toughened up on the laws about annexation, and unless you come to us voluntarily, it's really difficult for us just to come out and annex you. It's next to impossible to even do.
Well, our son used to come to our home on Alden Road in Fort Wayne, and they came to him and said, "Well, we're going to annex you, they didn't give him any choice."
It's-
Which is going to be, that's it.
Yeah. It's not next to impossible, but it's very difficult in comparison to what it was a years, a few years ago, so.
And now, if we would decide to be annexed, what kind of cost are we looking at? I mean, for a residential home.
One residence?
Right. Take a look here, real quick. The percent change in property taxes would be approximately 64%. So your taxes would increase by 64%, but if you have water and sewer, your rate would go down by 30% because you would be an in-city user.
And typically, an indirect benefit of being annexed and having access to public utilities is it tends to increase the value of your property. So if you sold it at a later time and you were on municipal utilities, it tends to increase the value of your property.
Do you have city water and sewage now?
No, we have our own well. We have a new well at Adams, or some of the tanks there grew good. There's actually a new law that was just passed last year, that if a municipality annexes, it doesn't matter what kind of annexation, that boundary can no longer be used to establish contingency in voluntary annexations. So what that means is they pretty much can't use that boundary to come and get you. It would have to be something that you would have to come to the boundary.
Right. But some of your neighbors may likely want to be annexed now that we know we're in that area, because they would like city-
I prefer.
Sure, and that may be the case, but in other areas, we'll find, if somebody's right on the edge, many times they would like to be annexed because they want city water, sewage, and trash pickup. It's a benefit to some, not to others, so.
But many of your neighbors came, two weeks ago, expressed the same concern about being annexed, and that, there is not, we're not desiring to do that, and the only way that would happen is if you came to us and said, "We want to be a part of the city."
In an ideal world, you wouldn't be creating an island, but just the way the state statute is, it's kind of creating that.
If you look at our city map, you will see that there are other-
Islands.
Islands within the city.
Correct. Yeah, you're not, you're not on an island by yourself. There's other, there's other islands. But we do appreciate you coming and expressing concern and asking questions, because we're open to try to answer them the best we can. How did Jeff question?
Yeah, a couple of. I'm assuming that the, I'm assuming it's the water and sewer lines have already been run to the jail, right? So the city's not going to accrue any cost involved with having to run lines to them because we're annexing it?
It's already been ran, right? That's correct. It's already-
It's already, that's already-
It's already hooked up to county's expense.
Okay, the other question I have is when we, when you guys annexed the Adams County Memorial Hospital, and at that time, it was mentioned that, okay, we're going to accrue a cost here because we're annexing the hospital, probably about $10,000 a year. Now, is that going to happen out of your chute?
Well, the hospital paid the, for the, well, that cost, that $10,000 was the fiscal plan. Hospital reimbursed us all of that, okay?
Is that what the $200,000 was for? That the hospital needed?
$200,000.
No.
And we have an arrangement with the county for reimbursement. And we have an arrangement with the county for reimbursement for Christie's services.
So, the city's not going to accrue anymore?
Well, I think what you're referring to is the fact that they were paying out-of-city rates before, and they're paying in-city rates now, so...
That's a different thing. I know, I know what you're talking about.
Well, you said $10,000 a year. The only annual expense is to...
Well, nobody mentioned why you'd get $10,000 even paying up.
No, okay, this is right here. Increased potential impact of providing fire and police services to that area.
Your debt.
That's what we're looking at. It was $600 for police and $7,400 for...
That's for out there. This is for the jail.
Right, for the jail.
You're not talking about the hospital.
No.
I think the hospital was, like you said, the difference in the out-of-city rate versus the in-city rate. That was the conversation.
And the jail's already paying in-city rate where they're at now. So, they're going to still be on it. Are we using water now?
No, I'm talking about the old jail.
Oh, yeah. I don't think the new... I don't think we have water. I know we don't have toilets. We don't have any residents, I know that. The hospitals rate came down because they were made out of dollars. And then they moved in city, and the rate came down. Whereas, the jail is already paying in city. When they move out there, it'll still be paying in city.
Other comments or questions? Counsel, any comments or questions? Tim, any comments or questions? If none, I would move for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Have a motion and a second to close our public hearing. And now, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same. Now, I would need a motion to reconvene our council meeting once again.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now reconvened into the council meeting. And the next thing that I have would be our second reading of Ordinance 2016-8.
I will make a motion to place Ordinance 2016-8 by its second reading in short title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to place Ordinance 2016-8 for its second reading by short title only. Tim?
All in favor.
All in favor.
Aye.
Pose the same. Tim?
Ordinance number 2016-8, short title, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, which annexes certain territory to the city of Decatur, Indiana, commonly known as Adams County Correctional Facility, Miller Farm Property Annexation to the City of Decatur, Indiana.
I will make a motion to pass Ordinance 2016-8 on its first reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pass Ordinance 2016-8 on its second reading. I have roll call vote, please.
Tim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koshon.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
I'm going to make a motion to table Ordinance 2016-8 until our next meeting.
On September 6th. Have a motion. Do I have a second to table Ordinance 2016-8? Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same. We'll have our third and final reading on September 6th. Thank you all for your attendance.
Thank you.
Moving on. Next thing I have is Ryan Noblet from Connect to Careers. He's going to make a presentation to us about all the exciting things Connect to Careers has going. Thanks for coming, Ryan.
Thanks for having me. I'll be brief. I'm going to give you guys an update as to what we've done, what we've got coming up, and the future programming that we have coming down the pipe. For those of you, this is a reminder, the mission of Connect to Careers is to create opportunities for career advancement through a fully engaged and effectively prepared workforce. So, what have we done so far? We finished our first cohort of what's called the Co-Starters Program. We finished that back in June. If you aren't familiar with that program, Co-Starters is a nine-week program that is equipped aspiring entrepreneurs with insights, relationships, and tools that are needed to turn an idea into action in a sustainable business that can thrive. Co-Starters is an action-driven collaborative process with a small group of like-minded people. It is led by a facilitator who's also an entrepreneur himself. They identify their assumptions that they have on their business idea, and then throughout the cohort, they are encouraged to test those assumptions with prospective customers. So, each week, they keep coming back to class with, "I talked to X number of customers, and I tested my assumptions, and this is what they told me." So, that approach enables them to quickly uncover flaws in their idea, and then helps them understand how to fix those flaws and how to maybe change directions one way or another if they need to, that can quickly help them create a sustainable business, how to articulate their model, and then repeat that process with every idea they have going forward. Co-Starters uses what's called the Canvas Model. That was inspired by the business model Canvas. It provides an intuitive visual map of... Shows them their customer, helps them understand a problem that they're solving for that customer, and then takes them through the business model of how to bring that solution to market. During Co-Starters, the participants develop and fine-tune their ideas. They examine every aspect of their business, and then tweak those ideas over real-time feedback from people throughout the community and throughout our cohort. Over the nine weeks, we covered the following topics. Week one was knowing yourself. Week two was knowing your customer. Week three was how do I get that relationship right? Week four was building their models to scale. Co-Starters is really cool because it encourages all the participants to start small. There's a lot less risk that way. You know, people will come in on the first day, and they'll have this gigantic vision that we don't squelch, that we say, "What part of that can you start today on a smaller scale?" So, that we have less people just floundering out there, and we have real sustainable businesses being started. Week five was strengthening their structure. Week six was discovering the bottom line. Week seven was accounting for growth. Then, week eight, planning for the future. And then, we finished on June 15th with what was called Pitch Night, to where some of you I know were able to be there. We invited the community in to listen to presentations from each one of the entrepreneurs on their business idea, and going forward, knowing that they can support them in the community. Throughout the cohort, we had nine individuals that participated, and they represented several different businesses and business ideas. One of the coolest things about our Co-Starters program is we had six exceptional guest speakers, five of which were Adams County citizens or residents. They were Greg Kipson from Mindsey Graphics as a speaker, Tony Mellon, Campol Vito Chicago Pizza, Smithy Burkholder with Prestige Realty, Stacy Summers, who was just here earlier from Biller, Burry, Purman, Miller &amp; Brown, Pat Renshaw from In Balance Books. And then, the last guest speaker called for a Co-Starters graduate, saying that this is the first Adams County program. We reached out to Fort Wayne and pulled in the owner of Bird Boy Brewery out of Fort Wayne, and he came down and gave a really good presentation for what Co-Starters did for him and how it's enabled him to create a sustainable business today. One other program that we're excited about that we have going on is our Workforce Weekly email newsletter. If any of you are not on that, don't receive that every Monday. Shoot me an email at ryan@connecttocareers.com, and just in the subject line, put "workforce weekly." If you don't get that, I'll make sure you get that. Now, we send out a weekly newsletter every Monday that is very basic. It's usually got three small articles in it that inform the public, informs businesses on workforce development opportunities within the region. Something that we feel is very important for Connect to Careers to do is help navigate the matrix of available resources. There are so many things available talent development-wise and workforce development opportunities in the region that so many people just don't know about, that they don't know that are out there, and a lot of them are free. So, through this newsletter, we can connect people with those opportunities. Currently, we've got just over 100 people receiving that, so we estimate, you know, with them forwarding it on to their colleagues, that between 250 and 500 people receive that every Monday. Obviously, we'd like to double that quickly, so if you know of anybody that should receive that, please let me know. And we definitely feel that it serves a need in informing the public and informing businesses of opportunities that are out there. Some future stuff that we've got coming up, I'm very excited about our Talent Growth Initiative that starts this Tuesday. After talking with many HR directors throughout Adams County, they have said that there is a need to help develop their workforce, to think critically, act responsibly, and have a positive influence on their colleagues and people that they may supervise. So, we've developed what is essentially a basic leadership curriculum in conjunction with ICFW. We went to local businesses and industry and solicited 12 to 15 individuals that their supervisors can identify. It'll be four hours a day, every other day for six weeks, starting on Tuesday. Currently, we have 11 individuals signed up. We're going to host it at various locations throughout Adams County. Mindsey Graphics has agreed to host the first one. Rev is going to be a host. Smith Brothers &amp; Burn, just to name a few. One thing really neat about the Talent Growth Initiative is each supervisor, in conjunction with the participant, is going to be asked to develop a robust project to work on throughout this 12 weeks. So, that not only is the individual and the employee going to develop a new sense of leadership, they're also going to be able to hand back to their company that they work for a project that was designed by their supervisor, so that it's a win-win for both the new leader and their company that is sending them.
So, you have 11 in that, Ryan?
There's 11 so far. We've got room for four more if we can get them in by Tuesday.
You said every other week.
Every other... So, six sessions over a 12-week period. And then, the outline for the course, session one is going to be talent and self-assessment. Self-awareness will be covered in two and three. Session four is working with others. A lot of communication and managing conflict will be covered then. Session five is then how do I lead others through motivation, and how do I multiply talent? Session six will be fostering relationships, so building a culture, and then networking and strategic partnerships will be covered into that one. The Talent Growth Initiative will finish up on the evening of November 10, I believe. And you'll all receive formal invitations when we get closer. But it's going to be a project symposium that we've got the TENSY depot reserved for to bring you all and county commissioners and the other municipalities that have supported us to come in and listen to these project presentations. So, that'll be a fun night of celebrating new cultivated leaders here in Adams County. Just a couple of future opportunities that we have. We are putting together what we're calling First Fridays. So, obviously, like the name, it'll be held on the first Friday of every month, starting in October at 7:30 in the morning. We're going to run a short 7:30 to 8:30. We'll provide breakfast for a minimal cost of $5 or $6, something like that. And we'll hold it at various locations throughout Adams County. So, be looking for an announcement on Facebook and email where we're going to hold the first one, which, like I said, will be in October. And I've got Work One will be coming in to do a half-hour presentation on what are their programs that they have available to Adams County residents as far as developing talent, resume building, things like that. So, we'll have 12... Plan out 12 different sessions for October through the following October coming up, and that'll be called First Fridays. So, we can come in, get you a quick breakfast sandwich and some valuable information, and get you out the door. One other thing that we've got going on is we have applied, or are in the process of applying for an OKRA community grant. If we are awarded that $250,000 grant, that money will all go towards putting on four different types of classes: CNC, leadership, welding, and industrial maintenance. So, that would be, I believe, a two-year program to put those on, that we are partnering with Wells County Economic Development, and Work One is also a partner on that grant. Other than that, I entertain any questions?
More for the... For ourselves, do we have anybody in mind for this Talent Growth Initiative that, within the city structure, could be possible?
Yes, supervisory?
Possibly, yes. Nothing I can talk about this evening, but yes.
Okay.
How much is the fee for the TGI?
$600 per employee, or if you send multiple, we'll knock it down to 500. And essentially, the cost is just to sustain the program. We anticipate doing two a year.
And that is going to be on Fridays?
Tuesdays.
Tuesdays.
Starting this coming Tuesday, a week from today.
And how many hours?
Four hours, 8:30 to 12:30.
Okay. All right.
I just think that specific program sounds great for someone like our municipality that's having some turnover and wanting to move some guys and gals up into different positions. That's what you're there for, and that's what we need to use you for. So, it's great.
Appreciate your support.
You're going to do a good job, Ryan.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next I have...
Take your brochures with you, Ryan, if you want.
You can ask your ones.
There's a pile over there. Media room.
Next, we have another ordinance. And that would be for the sale of recycling totes. Speaking of totes, Jeremy, did you find out where they were delivered?
I lost.
Pardon? You don't know? Our totes have shipped. According to tracking, they've delivered. We just don't know where they've delivered.
They're in the car along.
That's what I'm guessing. Tim has written up an ordinance so that we can...
For the ordinance number 10.
I'm going to use 11. We'll just use 10 next time. Tim has written up an ordinance so that we can sell the totes. We can't just sell them without having an ordinance to do so. And it's a relatively simple ordinance. You just kind of want to cover them.
Yeah, the...
Sure.
The ordinance allows for totes to be sold by the city. It's going to be for a price not to exceed $16 plus sales tax. It will be sold by the sanitation department. Totes can be picked up there. That's where you would pay for them. The totes will be used for curbside recycling, and the funds that are generated by the sale of the totes would be put into the general fund. Be a separate fund for the sales taxes collected, and that would then be paid to the Department of Revenue as they require. Once the final price is established for the totes, that will be conspicuously posted at the location. It will be put on the city's website. Payment will be accepted either in the form of cash or by check, and that's required at the time of purchase. The purchases will be limited to three totes per household, and it will be done on a first-come, first-served basis. There's 800 totes that are supposed to be delivered hopefully soon, and those will be made available for sale once we have them available and once this ordinance is adopted.
And once Jeremy figures out where they got delivered. Jeremy lost the totes?
Do you need a motion?
Jeremy did.
Any discussion about this ordinance before we have it read?
I'll make a motion to place Ordinance 2016-11 on its first reading by short title only with one breath and one breath only.
One breath only. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same.
Ordinance number 2016-11, short title, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which authorizes the sale of curbside recycling containers, totes, which establishes a maximum price to be charged per container, which identifies the funds into which the sale proceeds are to be deposited.
Jeez. I won't make a motion. Pass Ordinance 2016-11 on its first reading.
Second. Have a motion and a second to pass Ordinance 2016-11 on its first reading. I have roll call vote.
Tim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koshon.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Yes.
I will make a motion to place Ordinance 2016-11 on its second reading by short title only.
Second.
Motion and a second to place Ordinance 2016-11 in its second reading by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same. Tim?
Ordinance number 2016-11, short title, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which authorizes the sale of curbside recycling containers, totes, which establishes a maximum price to be charged per container, which identifies the funds into which the sale proceeds are to be deposited.
Make a motion to pass Ordinance...
No.
Sorry.
Yeah, you're right.
No, I'll make a motion to pass Ordinance 2016-11 on its second reading.
Second. A motion and a second to pass Ordinance 2016-11 on its second reading. I'll have roll call vote.
Tim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koshon.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
In anticipation of starting on September 12th, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and place Ordinance 2016-11 on its third reading by short title.
Second. A motion and a second to place Ordinance 2016-11 in its third and final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same. Tim?
Ordinance number 2016-11, short title, An Ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Decatur, Indiana, which authorizes the sale of curbside recycling containers, totes, which establishes a maximum price to be charged per container, which identifies the funds into which the sale proceeds are to be deposited. which identifies the funds into which the sale proceeds are to be deposited.
I want to make a motion to adopt ordinance 2016-11.
Second. A motion and a second for adoption of ordinance 2016-11. But have roll call vote.
Tim Collier.
Yes.
Craig Koshaw.
Yes.
Matt Dyer.
Yes.
Tyler Fulon-Camp.
Okay, that's all the ordinances. Next, we have some event form, or an event form. First is for the St. Mary's Fall Fest. And Melissa, I believe, has that, and will kind of cover that with us. You've got all the autographs necessary. Everything is complete. St. Mary's Fall Fest is, um... September 10th and September 11th. There we go. Friday and, is that Saturday and Sunday, right? Yeah, September 10th and 11th. That's a church parking lot at 5th and Monroe Street. It'll be from 5:00 until approximately 10:00 PM on Saturday. And on the 11th, will be from noon until 6:00 PM. They'll have some street closings. 5th Street from Monroe Street to Madison Street. And then Madison Street from 4th to 5th. And that's Sunday, September 11th, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. They've already talked to the police, the fire, the street department, got all the autographs necessary. They have a note attached here. "We, the Fall Fest Committee of St. Mary's Assumption Catholic Church, are requesting the closure of 5th Street from Monroe Street to Madison, Madison from 4th to 5th on Sunday, September 11th, from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We will leave the intersection of 5th and Madison open for the convenience of anyone needing to get down 5th Street. Thank you for your consideration. We hope to see you all at the annual festival. Thanks to Fall Fest Committee." This is the exact same thing they've done the last several years, and it's all went well. And with that, I would look for a motion to accept the event form.
Sub move.
Second.
Motion and a second to accept the event form for St. Mary's Fall Fest. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same.
Thank you. We should have had a second event form this evening for the Kikianga Festival. However, it's not here. I will have it tomorrow. Subject to me having it, I do have a couple of things, or be saving it tomorrow. Subject to that, I have a couple of things to cover with the Kikianga Festival. First of all, they sent us a letter asking for our sponsorship of the festival. They have a variety of different things. Music groups, storytellers, all kinds of wood carvers, all kinds of education going on. And in order to present all of this, they have a budget of over $8,000. And they hope they, that they could include us with a generous contribution. And then it says to please see the attached form for sponsorship opportunities. They have a gold level, a silver level, and a bronze level. Gold is $1,000. Silver's 500. Bronze is 250. And in the past, we have always been the bronze $250 sponsor. And any, any discussion or motions that I might want to move on with?
Make a motion to continue with our $250 sponsorship level.
A motion and a second to be a bronze sponsorship of the Kikianga Festival. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Thank you. Council funds? Or mayor funds?
Yeah, where'd we take that from, Phyllis?
I think we took this...
Probably council. Probably.
Either or.
Probably council, Tim. Now, pending me getting that event form from them tomorrow, although I can't really get it, have you approve it without having it, Jeremy does have a little list of some streets that we may want to approve closing for the festival.
I received this list late this afternoon. Most of these are pretty common. Pretty much the same as what they have been the last several years. I'll just briefly go through these. Madison Street between 2nd and 3rd will close Thursday evening at 8:00 PM. Will reopen Saturday at 6:00 PM. Madison Street between 1st and 2nd, closed Friday, 3 to 9. 2nd Street, Jefferson to Monroe, Friday, 3 to 9. Court Street, 2nd to the alley, Friday, 3 to 9. 2nd Street, Jefferson to Jackson, Saturday, 8 to 6. 1st Street, Jackson to Monroe, Saturday, 8 AM to 9 PM. Jackson Street, from 2nd Street to the west side of the parking lot at Riverside Center, Saturday, 9 AM to 8 PM. Jackson Street, typo here, I believe it's Front Street to the west side of the parking lot, Saturday, August 19th, 9 AM. Will open Sunday, 6 PM. The compost site, they will be doing some archery and some different firearms. This is something that they changed a couple of years ago. They close it briefly on Saturday morning for a safety issue, safety concern, from 9:45 AM to 11:30. They're projecting that one pretty long. It may be 10:00, 10:30 when it opens it back up. They're asking for 11:30. And then on Saturday, August 20th, 6:30, is the Adams Memorial Hospital-Greely-Gallup 5K Walk Run Race at 6:30. Temporary traffic stop as runners return to Riverside Center in time of approximately 7:30 PM. It's pretty standard. We've never really had any issues. The compost site's kind of been all or all, you know, depending on, sometimes they request.
So if people show up at the compost site, will there just be a sign saying that they'll be... I mean, how?
There just be barricades. A lot of times, people just leave the stuff out where it was cleaned. Not a big issue for an hour and a half.
Okay.
Normally, people may be moaned again by then, but if it were to stay dry, I wouldn't see any issues at all. What they think we know there, so. Just recommend that you approve these pending we get the proper paperwork.
Pending they turn in their paperwork, make a motion.
Approve it.
It's a good event. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Last thing I have is just to make a matter of record here with the council. We announced it this evening at the Board of Works meeting, the resignation of one of our police officers, Julie McConnell. Her last day on the job is today, and I want to thank her for her four-plus years, I believe it was, of service to the police department. We had nothing but good compliments on Julie's service. She'll be missed. That is all that I have. Department heads. Greg? Anything?
I'm good, thank you.
Roger? Ann? Les? Jeremy?
Preparation is still on the way for the start of the recycle program, August 12th. Pending we find where the totes lane is at on September 1st. That's one of the very final pieces of this project.
Right. Totes and education. And there's education all over the back of the room back here.
Yeah. But we need the totes to finish off the education.
Yeah. Ann, you got something after all?
Uh, we were. We were, except it's in my office, so...
So we'll take care of that in two weeks.
I apologize.
You didn't, you weren't going to let us miss that, were you?
Did we jump that program up a month?
It's September 12th.
September 12th, yeah. Dan?
He did.
Bill?
He did. He met September.
And Melissa? You don't have anything you want to say about the recycling? Or anything about people going to be getting some educational materials or anything? Thank you. I'll second that with Melissa there. If we could get a little ink on that, maybe Bob and Bob and... Yeah. But if, yes, some people would like to take their street and go up and down the street and just put these on the doorknobs and move on. It'd be great. Nothing else from council? How about, or council any comments? How about from the public? Mary? Okay. Bill knows who it was. Who was it, Bill?
My grandson.
How about that? I said, I didn't even know they did. Good, good. Freddie did it. Fred Philling did it, yep.
Him and his helper.
Okay. Bob? Yep, it was nice. Very nice. Nothing from council. No more public comments. Board of Works done. How about, let's...
Motion to pay the claims?
Have a motion...
I have one more.
Oh, Phyllis, I didn't, I didn't, I'm sorry. I let Phyllis out. Phyllis, go ahead.
I did receive the acknowledgement letter from the LGF for the lowest special distribution, additional appropriations. So Chairman can start paving.
Good. Do we need to make, we need to make that a matter of record?
Yeah.
Section and a second to make the notification on the low it funds a matter of record. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. Now...
A motion to pay the claims, please.
I have a motion and a second to pay the claims. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose the same. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Have a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
And a second. All in favor?
Hey, Jeremy.
All in favor? Oppose the same. We're adjourned.